Good evening. My name is Ramona Plummer and I am a senior at Duval High School. I've participated in Student Government Association where I currently serve as the president, National Honor Society Choir, and have also taken four advanced placement classes over my four-year tenure at Duval High School, including AP Environmental Science, AP Language, AP Literature, and AP Biology, all while having maintained a 3.75 GPA. I strongly enjoy... (applause) Thank you. Thank you. I strongly enjoy giving back to my community and my school. I am a nominee of my administrator, Ms. Shenee Wheeler. My long-term goal is to become a pediatrician. I am a proud senior at Duval High School and I am ready for college. Now, I want to welcome you to the September 23 Prince George's County Board of Education Meeting. Highlights this evening will include the news break, planting seeds, and growing careers. Additionally, under new business, the Board of Education will address the fiscal year 2015 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. Please continue to check www.pgcps.org for upcoming Board of Education meetings and events. And now, the September 23 Board of Education Meeting will begin.
Good evening, friends and colleagues, and welcome to the September 23, 2014 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. As always, I remind folks, if you have your cellphone devices, please do turn them off or put them on vibrate so that they do not interrupt the meeting. Before we begin, let's give another round of applause to the dynamic Ramona Plummer, 12th grader at Duval High School.[128.53][128.53](applause) She, like so many of our other students, make us proud every day, and we thank her for her hard work, and we thank the teachers and administrators at Duval High School for producing such an excellent product. All right, let's start. Mr. Valentine, would you please lead us in the board prayer and pledge of allegiance? Please rise.
This is Bauer heads in prayer. "Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance steers to action with love, wisdom, and understanding." Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Mrs. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, sir. Dr. Anderson. Mr. Burrows.
Present.
Ms. Epps.
Here.
Ms. Ubanks. Ms. Higgins. Ms. Jacobs.
Here.
Dr. Kaufman. Ms. Mundy. Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Ms. Waller. Ms. Williams. Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Ms. Boston. Dr. Ubanks.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just, Ms. Ubanks, Board Member Ubanks is sick today, and several of our other board members had pressing community meetings this evening and couldn't join us, but are always with us as we do our work. Okay, next item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the September 23, 2014 Board Meeting Agenda?
This chair moves to that we adopt the agenda and also move that in that motion that we move our non-public agenda items speakers up to public on-agenda comments speakers.
Okay, we can gladly do that. We had talked on the side about not doing that in this particular meeting, given the number of meetings, and making sure that we get through the brief agenda items that we have so we can vote while we still have a quorum.
My motion remains, you know, we have a lot of families in the audience tonight, a lot of community members.
That, sir, you have every right to make the motion, we just didn't know if you were part of that conversation.
I wasn't.
Okay. All right, is there a second? All right, doesn't look like we have a second to that motion, Mr. Burrows. I would just note for our members, we're going to be here, we're going to hear every one of you, and we're going to hear what you have to say, but we want to make sure that we vote on the few items that are on our agenda this evening.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
There is a agenda, there is a second. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we're going to hear everybody first. We're going to move on to the approval of the minutes. Colleagues may have a motion to approve the September 11, 2014 System Oversight Meeting Minutes and September 11, 2014 CIP and Fab FY 2016 to '21 Public Hearing Minutes and the September 26, 2014 CIP and Fab FY 2016, 2021 Public Hearing Minutes.
So moved.
It has been moved. Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? That motion carries. All right, we'll now have a news break entitled "Making Sense of Spanish."
We were just eyeing your plate. What is it you can't wait to dig into?
Well, the cucumber salad is very appetizing to the eye, so I can't wait to dig into that. But I look like a pig, but I got a little bit of everything because it all looks so good.
To Maryland's Agriculture Secretary and everyone else gathered at Gwynne Park High School recently, the food couldn't have looked any better because it couldn't have been any fresher. From tomatoes to peppers to watermelons, the whole cornucopia of fruits and vegetables served up by the school's culinary arts students had been grown on-site by their peers. Just as Michelle Obama has been serving White House vegetables at state dinners, so too have the new student farmers enrolled in the county's first-ever Academy of Environmental Sciences been providing food for their school's cafeteria. And while getting that food on the table hasn't been as easy as some of them thought, they couldn't be any happier at how the harvest turned out.
Do kids like to eat what you grow?
I hope so. They buy it, so yeah.
Do you feel proud that you've grown this stuff?
I do. Like when people in a cafeteria eat, I'm like, that was all me.
When we first started with the program, as was mentioned, students didn't want to go outside for fear that their shoes would become dirty. Fast forward two weeks, and they're getting dirty, they're planting seeds, they're seeing the results and the yield for their harvest, and so it's a wonderful way to connect all of the different areas at the school. We've mentioned science, technology, engineering, math, and we have the arts out here as well. So it's a wonderful way for students to see the roots of the country as well as incorporate solution-oriented project learning skills along the way.
It's a lot of work. You've got to get on your hands and knees, hands-on work.
What are some of the tricks of the trade?
We want to make sure our soil is always tilled because the same soil on top just starts to lose its nutrients, so we pull the bottom to the top.
All this was really hard work, and after all you do is put a couple of seeds in the ground, water it, it'll grow. It's not that hard, but after a while, after doing it for a year, you realize there's a lot that goes into it. Every Monday, we have to stay after school, and when we come after school, we work on our plants, and it's like, I thought we really didn't have to check on them, we just had to water them every now and then, but I realized you have to pull out weeds, have to water some, you might have to fertilize, but not all, and after they grow, you're just like so proud of them.
And while the piles of eye candy produce in Gwynne Park's lunchroom that day helped advertise Maryland's farm-to-school program, they also hinted at the variety of careers available to those with an interest in agriculture.
Well, today is a wonderful event, you know, so exciting to see our children actually growing food and then see those same children prepare those items. And, you know, today, our children don't get a lot of opportunity to do that, so, you know, the farm-to-school program is about nutrition, but it's also about education.
I know I wanted to be in a science career, which is why I wanted to sign up for this one, because we didn't have any kind of academy like this. We had like food academies and hair academies, we never had a science academy, so I thought that this would be a good opportunity because it's not just about farming, it's about different fields of farming. Like I want to work in like a lab or something dealing with bio, like biology, so this academy really helps with that.
Good luck, and thanks to all the academy students for planting the seeds for future lunches and bountiful futures of their own. This is Dave Z.
Wonderful. 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 All right, for those who are looking for "Making Sense of Spanish," you'll get that next time. That was planting seeds and growing careers, and it was wonderful, wasn't it? Nice surprise for you.[666.12][666.12](laughing) All right, we'll move on to the chair's report. I will begin with a somber note. Noted poet Thomas Campbell once quoted, "To live in hearts we leave behind is not to die." And he reminds us that the memories of those who have made the impact upon our lives when they were living will forever keep them alive in our hearts once they've transitioned. We have lost several members of our family recently, and I want to ask you to join me in remembrance of them. Russell Tedesco, former director of security services. Robert Coleman, business services. Viola Butler, paraprofessional at Dr. Henry A. Wise Junior High School. Sarah Chambers, bus driver. Daniel Morgan, bus driver. John DeCosen, bus driver. And LaShawn Polley, bus driver. Additionally, Dr. Maxwell, on behalf of the entire Board of Education and staff, please accept our sincerest condolences to you and your family for the loss of your mother-in-law, the great memorable Mrs. Florence Kaplan. Colleagues, would you please join me in a moment of silence for our friends? Our friends and family do indeed live on through us. All right, on some other notes about the great work we're doing, we're currently in the second week of National Hispanic Heritage Month. This month-long celebration that began Monday, September 15, recognizes the contributions made and the important presence of Hispanic and Latino-Americans in the United States and celebrates their heritage and culture. One important contribution that affects us even today was the Mendez versus Westminster, a 1946 federal court case that challenged racial segregation in Orange County, California. This court case was the precursor of Brown versus the Board of Education that led to the desegregation of schools in the United States. As of the start of this school year, Prince George's County Public Schools has a combined presence of over 31,511 Hispanic and Latino-American students. Please join me in celebrating and acknowledging their rich heritage and culture. Additionally, friends, we are extending hearty congratulations to the students from Duval, Eleanor Roosevelt, Gwynne Park, Potomac, and Sutland High Schools who competed in the third annual Pigskin Classic on September 6, at the University of Maryland College Park. We are indeed so proud of them. Couple of upcoming meeting announcements, September 27, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. Please join us at the College and Career Readiness Summit at Charles Herbert Flowers High School. I can't say enough about the hard work. We have about 30 colleges coming from all over the country, including several Ivy League colleges. We have workshops, we have all kinds of great things that are available to you and your students. Please come and join us. It doesn't matter whether they're in high school or kindergarten, it's never too early to start preparing for college, so please do join us this Saturday at Charles Herbert Flowers High School. Also, October 9, 2014 at 5 o'clock is our next board meeting, is on student achievement, and the following one is on October 23 at 7:05 p.m. All of those meetings take place here at the Sasa Boardroom, and persons interested in speaking at these meetings must register with the board office two and a half hours prior to the meeting by calling 301-925-6115. I will take one quick note of personal privilege before I conclude my remarks. You know, when I jumped into this process, we all talked about the kind of sacrifices we make. One of them happens to be when you are chairing the board meeting on your wife's birthday. So today is my beautiful wife Sherrell's birthday. I'm not sure if she's spending it watching the board meeting, but if she is, happy birthday.[972.75][972.75](laughing) And that concludes my chair's remarks. Dr. Maxwell.
Thank you, Dr. Ubanks. Good evening and happy first day of fall, and it's starting to feel like it. We are nearly a month into the school year, and after visiting more than 30 schools so far, I've seen a lot of great teaching and learning. I look forward to continuing my visits throughout our county and seeing more of the highly-qualified instruction going on in our system. I'd like to congratulate four Eleanor Roosevelt High School students who were named National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. Charles Bond, Avi, Ebueji, Kristen Ramsey, and Brenda Zhang are examples of the outstanding students we have in Prince George's County Public Schools. Not only have our students excelled, our teachers have too. Congratulations to Longfields Elementary School teacher Lee Hawkins, who won over $23,000 on Wheel of Fortune Teacher last week. Also, in a surprise visit by Farmers Insurance, Howard B. Owen Science Center teacher Virginia Fulton was named as one of 15 national finalists in the $100,000 Dream Big Challenge to benefit Maryland Summer Center for Space Engineering and Robotics. Online voting to determine the winner begins next week. Please cast your votes. You saw the news break on our homegrown school lunch program at Gwynne Park High School. Last week, Judge Sylvania Woods Elementary School, staff joined with No Kid Hungry and the Maryland State Department of Education to kick off the Maryland Breakfast Challenge to make sure all children who need a healthy breakfast can get one. I feel very strongly about the importance of us doing all that we can to provide nutrition to our students to enable them to be successful in school. In the next month, we have several important events coming up. On October 15, we break ground on what will be our next newest high school building, Fairmont Heights High School. The following day, October 16, we celebrate one of our latest capital improvement program projects with the dedication of Edward M. Felge Elementary School. At the next board meeting, on October 9, we are going to be discussing, well, I'm not 100% sure we are, we were talking about that date, but we are at this point hoping to discuss our international schools if we can get the last touches on our presentation ready. We look forward to seeing you at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. All right, we're now going to take public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items. Friends, to be clear, it is always our tradition that we move both up to the front of the agenda. In fact, the only reason we started out to do that today is we thought that we might lose one of our board members early and not have quorum. We've been assured that that won't happen, so we will indeed hear everyone now. It's also worth noting, I hope, that our policy allows us to stop at 15 speakers, but we believe in hearing your voice, so we don't do that. We haven't done that yet, and so we will hear all 32 of the folks who are registered if they are here. However, given that number, 32 times three minutes each is about an hour and a half, so we are going to ask you to, we're going to keep you to a strict adherence to the time limit. Quickly, we say you've registered to speak in public forum where the board will listen to your comments, the board will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. Please do not, speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual, and speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. And at that, let's start hearing from our community. We will first start with agenda items. We will start with Agenda Item 9.1, the Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal Years 2016-2021. And please forgive me if I do not pronounce your name right, but I have Nayella Avila, a student to talk about William Worth Middle School. And please pronounce your name for me, make sure I have it right.
Hi, my name is Nayeli Avila Ramos. I'm here to talk about William Worth. So like in William Worth, we don't have that much space. When we like switch classes, our hallways are like always crowded, and like when we're trying to get to our lockers, like they only give us like three minutes, and our lockers always are crowded because there's people going around. So like what I'm trying to say is for the new building is like to have more space in order for the space to be bigger, because most of the classrooms are not like big enough, and it affects my learning because sometimes people don't have seats and they're just like trying to find out where to sit down, and then they're distracting others, and sometimes they can distract me, so like really, you can't really tell, so yeah, like I think for our new building, we need more, more space. That's all.
Thank you so much.[1313.25][1313.25](applause) Our next speaker is Valeria Avila.
Good night. My name is Valeria Avila, and I'm actually a former student at William Worth Middle School. And I have two issues with the, that affected my learning when I was actually at William Worth. One was water, basically for like drinkable water. We went to gym class, one time the water ended like, they have four water, the tanks to finish like in one mod, so that was a big problem. Kids were sweaty, they wanted water, that was a big problem finding water, and then the next problem was technology. They had to shut down the Wi-Fi for all students, and not only students, actually teachers as well, they have to shut down their computers for testing, and then well, there are temps. We don't have Wi-Fi, we couldn't use our iPads and temps because there's no Wi-Fi outside, so that's actually something that the new building should have drinkable water and like Wi-Fi for like every student to be able to learn. All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Jose Sarase. So Sarasi maybe.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jose Sarake.
Sarake.
And I'm here to speak about William Worth School also. As you can hear, our kids need a new building. This building was built like 50 years ago, and it's in a really bad condition. So we, as parents, we would like to keep our kids in school. Our kids, sometimes they don't want to go to school, even they feel embarrassing of the conditions of their school. We want our kids to feel proud of their school, to love the school, and this school right now is in a bad condition, and the reason why we want a new building is because we want to keep our kids in school learning. We want, we don't want them at the street learning some other things, we want to keep them in the school. So please, let's make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.[1482.04][1482.04](applause) Our next speaker is Kevin Kendrick.
My name is Kevin Kendrick, and I'm a teacher at William Worth Middle School. I came here last year speaking on the same topic of our building, and I'm here again this year with many people from our community, both parents, both teachers, staff members, and we're here, political figures that are representing for our building, and again, just really bringing it to the forefront of the board to say that we really need a new building at our school. One of my former students, Nayeli, talked about the space. Another one of my former students, Valeria, talked about the technology, she talked about the water. It's funny, she mentioned the whole water thing. I had one student about a week ago, he came out into the hallway, there were no cups because we do have those coolers, and I saw he had his hand underneath the cooler. I'm like, what are you doing? He's like, well, there are no cups, I was trying to drink it out of my hand. That's what the actual student had said, and our water has been giving issues like that for many, many, many years, and to me, that's a problem right there. Again, I had another particular teacher who, after 30 years, did not have her asthma, the moment she walked into the building, her asthma reactivated. I have another teacher of mine who has some skin condition every time she walks into this type of building, the respiratory issues, the problems that this building has. We've had times where, you know, you would think rodents would stay hidden for most of the day, our rodents are bold enough to actually come out and disrupt learning, and it's true, and I'm not even trying to be funny when I say that, but it's the truth. And so I can bring these things up, they've been brought up before, and I do thank the board for what it is doing. We did have some architects coming to the building last week and ask our kids questions about what a 21st century building would look like, so I do thank that, but overall, I've been working at William Worth for about seven years. We have a lot of great kids there, we have an outstanding staff. I love where I work, and I want my kids, like the parent had said, I want my kids to feel proud of where they go, and I want them to, if we're talking about moving students into the 21st century and really serving 21st century students, then we need to have a 21st century building that's going to serve for the next 50 years. And so thank you for this opportunity to speak.[1619.83][1619.83](applause)
Thank you very much, all of you, for coming out and making your voices heard. The next speakers will be on Item 10.1, the Physical Year 2015 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. We will start with Donna Young.
My name is Donna Young, and I am a senior purchasing buyer and now in awaiting an appeal for a wrongful termination for what I'm about to say in similar type of activities. I noticed on the agenda, and I saw that School Dude was issued the bid, and you guys are talking about the maintenance program. This software in 2011 was put out to bid in bid number 008-11. During that time, prior to that, the maintenance department had already pre-selected this vendor as its identified vendor, therefore eliminating the process of open and fair competition. Upon the evaluation, School Dude and another company, which is a minority, came out on top with a 1.2 difference on the technical skills. However, after we opened the pricing of this bid, TMA was clearly, the other company is TMA, was clearly the best value for the board. TMA's initial startup cost was $108,000, and its yearly annual cost was $50,000, whereas School Dude's cost was $259,000, $259,000 startup with an annual maintenance of $136,185. Clearly a major difference. However, the Director of Maintenance at Building Services circumvented the process, went directly to School Dude to get additional purchasing, pricing, and they removed modules that were put out in the statement of work and not allowing the small business, TMA, the same opportunity. When this happened, I protested his award recommendation. At that point, we were told we were going to look at Oracle, which made sense because we were utilizing the Oracle system, and IT wanted to maintain a standard infrastructure. We were told we were going to move forward with Oracle by the previous director and chief, Mr. Miles. In June, when the acting director took over, we were instructed, I was instructed, to award that bid to School Dude with no justification and no documentation to support why we did not put it back out to bid, because I was told... why we did not put it back out to bid, because I was told to rescind the RFP and that we would put it back out for bid. However, that was never done. The problem is that we are not offering fair and open competition, and we awarded this bid. I searched, I did not see a new bid go out, I did not see any evidence that the other company was given an opportunity to rebid on the same opportunity, saving the board over $300,000 a year. This is insane. And we are not looking at what is in the best interest of the board, but we're looking at who has friends. When you're doing your audit to look at what may have gone wrong, please look at what we're doing in our contracting area. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, thank you. Our next speaker is Tanya Wingfield.
Good evening. Well, you know, due to the ever-changing meeting schedule of these board meetings, I, not often can I make it, but alas, I was able to make this meeting tonight. And what I want to talk about is I'm really puzzled by this first reader item that, because used to, it used to be what we were used to see in first reader, reader items, they were used to help us find out what was coming new, that the decisions that the board was going to consider. But now I'm seeing that these first reader items come with a resolution to accept recommendations and something that we are not used to in Prince George's County. And even if, if this is a modification to the plan, it's something new, and the public has a right to know the business that the school system is trying to conduct on our behalf. Now, the county executive promised us integrity and transparency, that that would be restored with this hybrid board. But the only thing that we've gotten with this hybrid board is a door closed in our faces. Lastly, I have a problem with the person negotiating contracts on behalf of this system is now the person to approve the very invoices for the contracts they negotiate, especially when this individual has a trail of very questionable things, and I've been here before and talked to you about it before, that continues to happen in this system. You all need to get your house in order. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to move on to public comment speakers on non-agenda items. Our first speaker is Michelle Young.
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell, members of the board. My name is Michelle Young, and I'm a school psychologist with Prince George's County Public Schools. I currently serve as the president of the Prince George's County School Psychologists Association and serve as the local representative to the Maryland School Psychologists Association. If you're quietly asking yourself, what does a school psychologist do? You are not alone. In fact, many times a declaration of my profession is followed with, oh, so you're like a guidance counselor then. While some of our roles within the school system do overlap, I can assure you that our training and areas of expertise are quite different. Unlike any other employee in the school system, school psychologists are uniquely trained in child development, education, and mental health. The continuum of services that we are trained to provide is governed by a comprehensive and evidence-based model developed by the National Association of School Psychologists. As school psychologists, we have an ecological perspective on the learning process. We understand the many variables that can impact a child's ability to not only be available for instruction, but to demonstrate a rate of growth and proficiency that will allow him or her to flourish as students and become not just successful, but thriving and contributing members of our community. We also understand the complex dynamics of the learning environment and the importance of collaboration among teachers, administration, parents, specialists, and community partners. I could stand here all evening really talking about how awesome my job is. I have stories that would make you laugh, would make you cry, and some that are really just unbelievably wonderful. In speaking with school psychologists, you will quickly realize that we are incredibly passionate about what we do because we truly believe we have the best jobs on the world, in the world. With the support of our state and national organizations and on behalf of our local school system, our school organization, I'm here tonight to acknowledge the efforts of our leadership in moving our school system in a new direction and to state in a public forum that we are excited to be a part of that change. As mental health professionals, we have long understood the impact of social, emotional competencies on academic achievement and are thrilled that our leadership is revising our mission statement to reflect the importance of supporting each student's unique academic, social, emotional, and physical potential in order to achieve greatness in college and career. We have read the articles in the Washington Post, we have read the transition plan, and we understand the need for and appreciate the strategic approach that is being taken to ensure that the changes we're making benefit our business, the business of educating the whole child. We know that in order for our students to be fully prepared for employment and college, they must possess a wide range of skills that can only be fostered through a safe and supportive, successful, a safe and successful learning environment, excuse me, which I think we can agree, requires an interdisciplinary team approach in order to accomplish. The Prince George's County School Psychologists Association has openly embraced Jim Collins' notion that even in the face of chaos and uncertainty, we can thrive if we actively choose to be great. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Erica Chandler.
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell, members of the school board. I am the current vice president of the Prince George's County School Psychologists Association. Like the majority of my colleagues, I am also a nationally certified school psychologist. I am also an internship supervisor, helping to train and prepare students to become future school psychologists, many of whom I now work alongside as respected colleagues and contributors to our department and school system. We know that students come to school with complex and diverse learning and developmental needs that create barriers to learning. If we are truly to raise the bar, close the achievement gap, and ensure that no child is left behind, there must be an adequate supply of personnel who can address both the individual needs of the students and the systemic needs of our schools. We want you to know that we are a critical part of the team and our school system. The recommended ratio for schools implementing the comprehensive model that Michelle referenced is one school psychologist to 500 or 700 students, depending on the level of needs within the student population. That's one to 500. So how do we add up? Based on 125,136 students and 90 full-time school psychologists, there is one school psychologist for approximately every 1,390, almost double the recommended ratio. How do we compare to other school systems? Montgomery County has, had a reported ratio of approximately one to 1,500, but their school system recently committed to increasing school psychology positions by approximately five each year for the next few years. With projected population growth, they will still fall short of the recommended ratio, but the school system has recognized a need for improvement and has taken action as a start. Frederick County has followed suit. If you look at other surrounding counties, we are comparable to many of them, but that does not make it okay. Rather than accept the status quo, we need to take action, just as Montgomery and Frederick Counties did, as well as other counties who already meet the recommended ratio of one to 500. According to the summary provided by the Teaching and Learning Committee, found in the Great By Choice Transition Team Report, quote, "Critical life and career skills such as resilience, psychological flexibility, perseverance, and self-motivation are essential skills necessary for career and college readiness." Ensuring our students are ready to learn is a critical component to helping all of our students achieve outstanding academic performance, and as school psychologists, we are trained to address this issue. Michelle and I, on behalf of the PGCSPA membership, appreciate the time that we were given this evening and want to extend our gratitude to each of you for your contributions to our school system, and to also thank Dr. Maxwell for his unwavering commitment and leadership in helping our school system become great by choice. We want to partner with you in meeting the needs of our students and help you continue the momentum of positive change in our school system. We look forward to further recognizing your contributions at an upcoming PGCSPA award ceremony and school psychology event on October 15th, because in gratitude, we thrive. We thank those that have already committed, and we look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Rosalyn Turner. It's Rosalyn Turner here. I do understand that several speakers that had an issue that I'm happy to report has been resolved by the district, and they didn't feel the need to speak, so some of those folks might not be here, so I'm going to check with them. Is Wonderful Hayes here? I wanted to meet Wonderful, Wonderful Hayes. That's nice. Gina Bowler.
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell, and members of the board. My name is Gina Bowler. I'm the parent of a child attending Overlook Spanish Immersion Elementary School. I'm also the co-founder of the grassroots group, My Bilingual Child, which advocated for Prince George's County Public Schools to open Spanish immersion dual language schools, and I'm a resident of District 9. I'm requesting that Transportation assess all the morning bus routes and schedules for Overlook and make revisions to comport with the school's schedule, school needs, and parent expectations. Along with my public comment, I'm submitting the following: A welcome letter from the principal to parents received in August, which included information on when students start arriving at the school, 7:20 a.m., when breakfast is served, 7:20 to 7:45 a.m., when instruction begins, 7:45 a.m. Bus routes for the school, which I downloaded this afternoon, and a copy of my email to Transportation, which is detailed in outlining my concerns and request. The revisions are needed due to bus scheduled arrival times that are too close to or the same as when instruction begins, and bus arrival times that in actuality are later. Students, particularly young students, like kindergartners, need sufficient time to settle in the classroom before they can be ready for instruction. That is, before instruction begins, they need time to walk from the bus to the classroom, take off their jackets, put down their backpacks, use the restroom, be seated at a table, and eat breakfast. It's unacceptable to put students in the unwanted and disorienting position of missing instruction and trying to catch up while eating breakfast late every day. On a related note, I'm requesting that future Prince George's County Public Schools' bus routes for schools be published with two additional pieces of critical, parent-friendly information: scheduled arrival time at the school for each bus, and scheduled start of instruction at the school. Without that information, it's hard for parents to see if the bus schedule and the school schedule are in harmony and meet student needs and parent expectations. Overlook is a Title I school and one of three elementary schools with the new Spanish immersion dual language specialty program. The other two schools are P.E. Williams and Caesar Chavez. Many people are working hard to get the program off to a great start and are following developments at these schools with great interest. None concerned want those considerable efforts and high expectations jeopardized by bus routes and schedules that don't work in practice for the school, students, and parents. Thank you for giving these concerns and request your attention.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Janice Sartucci.
Good evening. My name is Janice Sartucci, and I'm a member of the Parents Coalition of Montgomery County, Maryland. I'm here this evening because over the summer I began researching the deals that Maryland Boards of Ed have made with a company called Milestone Communications Management III, Inc., to place cell towers on each and every public school property in the state of Maryland. As part of my research, I did a Maryland Public Information Act request for agreements with your board and Milestone Communications. Through that research, I received and made public documents that were not available on the Board of Ed website. The documents revealed that the Board of Education approved a master lease with Milestone on November 11th, 2010, in an agenda item that took just 40 seconds. While the BOE vote was in November, the actual document was not signed until February 7th, 2011, and the signature is not that of the board president, but of only the superintendent. On page 11 of that master lease, it calls for Milestone Communications Management, Inc., to be qualified to do business in the state of Maryland. However, Maryland Corporation records seem to show that the registration for that company did not come until April 5th of 2011. My research also revealed a lease for cell towers at Flowers High School, signed by Superintendent Kevin Maxwell on August 5th, 2014. That lease had not been made public. The lease was approved by Monica E. Goldson and James E. Fisher, but the lease was with a different company. It was not with Milestone Communications Management III, Inc. By making these documents public, parents now know that the Board of Education has approved a deal to build up to three, count them, three, cell towers on each of 73 public school sites in the county. The county process to build a cell tower includes a review by the Tower Commission. The Tower Commission met in July without public notice and approved the Flowers cell tower. Applications for building permits have now been filed for cell towers on some sites. These applications are not going through the special exception process. A building permit can be obtained without a special exception if the cell tower will have four or fewer visits per year. However, we know that in Fairfax County, milestone communication cell towers on public school sites require one to two visits per month. Check by math, but I think that's going to be out more than four a year. I ask, how can parents track construction, construction projects at their schools when companies are switched, documents are signed in secret, and building permits do not go through the special exception process? How is the Board of Education serving school communities by placing these commercial structures on school playgrounds without public notice, without parent input, and without community input? I know that in eight days, this Board of Education will be in Ocean City for the annual Maryland Association of Boards of Education conference. I also know that Milestone Communications will also be there as a sponsor of that conference. Milestone representatives will be there, and they will have more than three minutes to talk to each of you in Ocean City. They won't be on the clock.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mallory Alcantara. It's Mallory here. How about Lisa Scullthorpe? It's Lisa here. Daphne Walker. These are all from the same topic, probably not here. Tammy Mamu. Is Tammy here? Dr. Reverend Rusan Etienne Jr.
I believe in a better Prince George's County. Do you believe? Dr. Height, having had a chance to meet you, the board, do you believe in a better Prince George's County? I'm not here to go back and forth. I'm not here to even talk about the problems, but it's time for solutions. How many of you, how many are you here now willing to file charges where our school board took 40 seconds to take my and your children's legal human rights, which is illegal? And last, and short, our schools, our children? Where was our county executive? And how in the world did he let this happen? God bless our children, and God bless Prince George's County. I believe in a better Prince George's County. Do you believe?
Our next speaker is Charlene Biesto.
Good evening. Good evening, Prince George's Board of Education, Dr. Maxwell. I'm an environmental regulatory affairs specialist by trade, and I'd like to talk about environmental literacy. We heard at the start of this meeting, a wonderful young student who's happened to take AP Environmental Science. I highly recommend that students in Prince George's County become educated, along with the Board of Education, on the importance and on understanding the public health threat of electromagnetic fields. I'd like to recommend three books for the AP Environmental Education Program. The first is called Public Health SOS: The Shadow Side of the Wireless Revolution; 110 Questions on Electromagnetic Pollution from a Forum at the Commonwealth Club of California. The book that I'm recommending is a very good book because it has questions and answers and is an easy read. It's by Camila Rees and Magda Havis. The next book, which would go for the middle school, is called Disconnect, and I also recommend it to the Board of Education. And this book is written by Deborah Davis. The third book would be more appropriate for the AP students, and it's called Cell Towers: Wireless Convenience or Environment- Towers: Wireless Convenience or Environmental Hazard: Proceedings of the Cell Towers Forum: State of the Science, State of the Law. One of the great things about the Cell Tower book, Wireless Convenience or Environmental Hazard, is that it has a lot of the legal issues that are surrounding the FCC and the Telecommunications Act. And it will help people who read it understand that the FCC guidelines that we currently have in place are based on an average 30-minute exposure of the general public. When these guidelines were first implemented, the public was not exposed to microwave radiation unless they lived near a military base, a shipping route, or an airport where radar was used. The only others' exposure was from microwave ovens. However, since the 1980s, our exposure to microwave radiation has been increasing exponentially. Living and learning under the antennas means hours of exposure each and every day. Students need to learn that they shouldn't, especially girls, we need to pass this message on to everybody. If everyone tells one person, puts it on Facebook, "Do not put cell phones in your bra. It can cause breast cancer." This is not a commercial you'll see during the Super Bowl. This is not a commercial you'll see anywhere, but you must, you must tell every woman and every girl and every sister and every mother and every cousin not to put a cellphone in their bra. This is an environmental literacy issue, and it's a human health crisis in the making. You also must tell our young boys not to keep their cell phones in the same pocket to try and carry a bag or something else. We need to have environmental literacy on RF exposure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Percy Rutherford.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I really don't know where to start with this cellphone towers business, but I will say this much. I heard the gentleman sitting right in front of me, he said, "You all believe in hearing our voices," were the voices that have spoken tonight in reference to the cellphone towers. I don't recall any of you guys and ladies sending out a message to inform us about the cellphone towers that are to go up on seven district schools. I find it quite shameful that you would put our kids in danger. As a parent and as a community activist, I find you guilty as charge. Secondly, what I want to say, to the people who have come here and supported me and other colleagues, other community actors in putting down the cellphone towers, I say thank you. The other thing that I want to say to everyone here, I have fought the cellphone towers in 2007, and I won. So I'm not here to talk about the problem, but I'm truly here to talk about the solution. And to the school board, how could you give away my grandchildren's rights? How could you violate all of our human rights? That's unconstitutional. And what I suggest to all of you, why don't you make things transparent for all communities? And you mean that Milestone Media offered you guys, the whole school, 25,000 bucks? I mean, how cheap is that? That's just wrong, just downright rotten. And I don't like it, so I'm going to fight you guys. And I'm going to fight you in a court of law, and I'm going to win because I know I've got enough people that will back me up. And if I did it once, I'll do it again. Have you really sit down and thought about what radio magnetic waves do to the human body? Not just our kids, but our senior citizens, the people who have fought so long that I'm able to stand here today. And on that note, I say thank you, but I'm out to get you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rutherford. Appreciate that. Next is Gertrude Uzomba. Is Gertrude here? I don't think so. Okay. How about Lisa Sally? Is Lisa Sally here? Come on up, Lisa.
Sorry.
No need to apologize at all.
I am actually here on a lighter note. Not to say that what is going on right now isn't as important because I feel like it's extremely important, you know, to think about our kids, but my name is Lisa Sally. I'm the Director of Community Relations with MyQVO. And you probably all here know Gerald Megget. I work very closely with him, and normally he would be here, but he couldn't be tonight because he actually, this month, is doing Bible study for his church. So sorry, God came first. But I just want to get through it really quickly because I know I have a little bit of time, so I'm going to talk a little fast, but I want to go through two quick testimonials and kind of give you an update of how MyQVO has been actually working in PG County. First letter is, "Thank you so much for volunteering your time to help our group of middle school students. The sixth graders here are very needy and have very hard time deciding what they need to do and when. As a result, many of them fail because they never turn in work, or they don't have, or they don't know what work they're supposed to give or put in unless they're given one-on-one instruction. Already the use of MyQVO, I see students learning to advocate for themselves. All of a sudden, students are realizing that they're in control of their grades and that their choices, that their choices determine their grades. If a student gets a bad grade, they're using their to-do list to schedule meeting times with me. If students have homework, I'm getting them more promptly. I have parents emailing me to thank me for showing them, their students, this instructional tool. So thank you for your hard work and dedication in making your school a better place, and it's been a pleasure to work with you, Mrs. Affenito." A next letter is, "Thank you, Mr. Megget, for a great presentation to the students. Our students are all motivated and excited about selling all their classrooms. Through the virtual office that you and your staff have developed to help our students be engaged during, after, and after-school, instruction was a brilliant idea. But not only does this help increase student attention, but it also gives students the ability to engage in academic conversations about upcoming assignments, assessments, projects, and what they've learned outside of the classroom as well as in school. I'm looking forward to seeing the success stories for MyQVO Virtual Office. Once again, thank you for your support, Ms. Pope, Middle School Science Department Leader." We're currently actually in Avalon Elementary, Greenbelt, Isaac-Gordine, Kettering, and Oxon Hill. We have upcoming schools coming up: Allenwood, Barnabay, Benjamin Tasker, Charles Carroll, James Golson, J. Frank Dent, and Thurgood Marshall Middle School. We're also serving Montgomery County, Fairfax County, and Howard County, and we actually have, those are kind of on our waitlist right now, and we have further waitlist items for your county as well. We have a team of eight, so you know. It's myself and Gerald. We have two world-class designers and four world-class engineers. And our goal right now, we want to focus to really help close the achievement gap. We don't look at it in terms of economics, but rather the difference between where a student is today and where they might be with the right mixture of tools and inspiration. Right now, just to give you a couple of quick stats, since we've been in the schools, right now, students have reflected on their lessons daily and have posted almost 7,000 new lessons they've learned. Students have posted over 3,000 questions they've asked in the classroom. Students have posted over 6,000 to-do list items and have completed more than 5,000 of them. Students have posted over 5,000 of their own grades and, for the first time, are taking control of their own learning scale. Just to be really quickly, we want to invite you guys out. I'm just, I'm wrapping up, but I want to invite you guys out to come to the school and see actually everything that's happening in the school because we're attacking, you know, the literacy challenges. We're actually doing this new thing with a new flash card so that it'll help out with the English language. I'm going. Lastly, Gerald and the team, I just want to say that they, they want to thank you guys because we are working really, really, really hard to make sure that we're closing that achievement gap. And I have a handout for you guys, so I'll shut up, and I have business cards and more of these for anybody who wants them or is interested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lynn Bieber.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about environmental literacy as well. I'm glad that we're thinking about that, but we do need to take a more comprehensive approach to exactly what constitutes our environment. In this age of technology, there is a component to our environment that has not been considered, and that is electromagnetic fields and radio frequency microwave radiation such as emitted by all wireless devices, which I thought we were told to turn off, but I see a lot of them on. Anyways, these are unseen and immediately felt by only a minority of people, but they are there nonetheless, and affect our environment in numerous ways. Scientific research from all over the world has led other countries to take a precautionary approach with their applications of wireless technology as a result. Public health has been put before profit, and people still communicate, and children still learn. Just as we learned long ago with water, air, and soil that unseen elements cause harm to our environment, so it goes with our electromagnetic atmosphere. The Earth has its own electromagnetic field, as do human beings, but we are bombarding ourselves with man-made electromagnetic fields millions of times greater than those, and scientific studies have proven biological effects. It's foolish to believe that marinating ourselves in this invisible electromagnetic field of such great strength has no biological effect. Indeed, we are electric beings, from the electrical activity of our brains seen on an EEG, to the manner in which the synapses of our nervous system function, to, we even use ten units to heal bone fractures, and the rhythms of our heart can be seen on electrocardiogram. As we continue to debate man-made global climate change, we should definitely continue research on man-made electromagnetic radiation in our environment. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Bob Ross.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Maxwell. I'm here tonight to talk about a topic, ELL, English Language Learning Schools. It's funny you mentioned about Mendez and the Brown Russell Board of Education, because that was one of many cases that set the stage for Brown Russell Board of Education. And as we look at, and I'm going to say this very, very clearly, the NAACP nationally has been supportive of all organizations and the movement of immigrants coming to this country. We was in the know, when they wanted the Dream Act, we was one of the champions of that. So when this EL school came up in the Gazette on March the 20th, it raised some eyebrows. I got a call at 3:45 in the morning about the school, and I further did some more research on it. Looked at the Internet Network of Public Schools, 15 schools, 17 schools in the country, 15 in New York, one in Oakland, California, one in Woodbridge, Virginia. The question that I raised quickly was, does this violate Brown Russell Board of Education in the Fourteenth Amendment? When you have a school that is exclusively for immigrants and first-time comers to the country, you risk the fact of having a segregated school system. And as I read the MOU, you have some things in the MOU that are totally different from one school to the next school. Now let me give you an example. You have in there that CASA School Board Internet Network will select and interview the principal. I had a case over at another school, a middle school, where the principal was in question, and the parents just wanted to interview. You can't have a standard for one school, then turn around and have a standard for another school. These are the indifference. And if you read through the whole, the whole MOU, and the way that it was brought forth in the beginning on March the 13th, two people abstained from that. It was emergency item. Emergency item has to be something critical for the school board in order to move it forth. That was not a critical issue. We sat down and met with CASA, the school board, trying to work out a compromise where it be a program rather than a school. To no avail, we haven't had that. We're willing to go back to the drawing board. But the NAACP has been on the front for 60 years, fighting for education, that is equality for all students, not just one segment of the community. And when you start picking it, I'm so afraid that we be turning the bus around, and we never backwards, always forward, and we must always remember that. And so as I look at this, the one question that no one can answer, does this meet the legal challenge? Dr. Maxwell couldn't answer that question. He believed it did, but he doesn't know. I say give it to your legal department and give us an answer on it. Everyone fails to answer that one simple question. That will resolve the issue.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Pettis. Is Robert Pettis here?
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, Dr. Uvank, School Board, and then Dr. Maxwell. My name is Robert Pettis, and Largo High School is my community school. I have been associated with Largo High School for well over 20 years through parking planning, as a parent of a student who graduated in '06, past PTSA president in '04, '05, I'm sorry, in '03. And I'm currently the PTSA treasurer, and I'm also the coach of the girls' basketball team. I'm here before you to say that Dr. Simpson-Marcus has been good to and for the school, the students, and the community. Dr. Simpson-Marcus took helm of Largo High during a leadership vacuum when the previous administrator lost control of the school. I am proud to say that Largo High School is a safe environment where students can come and learn without foolishness and nonsense. Unfortunately, what has been decided does not erase the fact that Largo High School is a good school, led by a very good principal in Dr. Simpson-Marcus. There's not so much more I can say, I need to say, because the vultures are out. You know, they're circling their prey. Easy pickings, you know, piling on. But I guess anyone can have an opinion, but it would be invaluable if the critics had a personal relationship and knowledge of Largo High School and Dr. Simpson-Marcus and her dedication and commitment to the staff, the students, parents, and community. Because in the end, it's always about the students. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thea Sciarato.
Thank you. Hi, I'm here to talk about air pollution. The EPA has an initiative to stop school bus idling, stating on its webpage that exhaust from excessive idling can affect human health. Now, I had called several months ago, actually, asking what Prince George's County is doing about this in terms of filters, in terms of not idling in the schoolyard, et cetera, and I have not heard back, so I will continue to follow up. But I wanted to talk about the diesel exhaust that is being brought on by the cell towers because every vendor has a backup battery system, and a lot of them use diesel generators. Diesel exhaust contains significant levels of particulate matter that poses significant health risks because they pass through the nose and throat and lodge in the lungs, causing lung damage and premature death. And I'm actually quoting from the Vermont Department of Health, and now I'm going to quote from the EPA page. "The EPA has determined that diesel exhaust is a likely human carcinogen and can contribute to other acute and chronic health conditions." Diesel generators for cell towers are turned on about every week for maintenance, and, for example, at Tasker, they're right near the tennis courts. At Charles Flowers, it's right near the bleachers. No one is checking to see our children and families sitting there when they're turned on, and this is unacceptable. I don't think we should place any more diesel exhaust on school grounds. We should be thinking about how to decrease diesel exhaust on school grounds. "It is everywhere" is not a good excuse, and I've been hearing, I've been hearing that a lot from people. "It is everywhere." We take a risk when we go outside. Well, yeah, we do, but we look when we cross the street, and we use seat belts, and we need to think thoughtfully. It is everywhere. "It is everywhere" is not how you create prudent public policy around children. And I think that, you know, lead is everywhere, asbestos is everywhere, and in the 30s, the European governments started banning lead, but we decided to wait until the 70s, and I think we need to look at history and think, because we seem to have history, we need to just go back, and, you know, we're all educators or work in education, and think about the past so that we can look forward to what we need to do in the future. So, children who have asthma are especially susceptible to diesel exhaust, it can exacerbate their asthma, their respiratory illnesses. I also want to speak to the issue of mold in buildings, HVAC cleaning, sometimes when construction is done, the crews are protected, but not the children, because the law dictates that the workers wear masks, but not the kids, and I know there's a lot of construction going on, and I hope that's attended to. Cleaning products that are free of chemicals that also exacerbate asthma and other immune issues. Environmental health issues should be a priority for Prince George's County. The long-term health risks to our children should be the highest priority, because what good is an education if we hadn't, if we haven't, if they're not going to be able to use it down the road because they are sick? And I just want to end with that our schools are not gas stations, and cell towers will increase diesel exhaust.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Bradley. Is Linda Bradley here? All right, how about Maritza Solano?
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell, and ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Maritza Solano. I grew up near Langley Park, and I'm a longtime resident of this county, former teacher, the aunt and godmother of several children in Prince George's County Schools, and currently a staff member at Casa de Maryland, working towards creating schools that are places in which our children will become healthy, skilled, and engaged citizens in our county, state, nation, and world. As a young person, I saw firsthand the difficulties my immigrant cousins faced trying to learn English and feel acclimated to this country. I helped them navigate through homework assignments, parental questions about the high school prom, and racial and cultural assumptions about their new classmates. Still, they overcame those challenges, managed to graduate from the school system, and have become active and contributing citizens of this county. In the last few years, I have witnessed county schools struggle with decreasing graduation rates, students falling behind in math and reading proficiency, and lack of culturally sensitive responsiveness to address the needs of some of our most vulnerable populations. That's why I'm so excited by the programs Prince George's County Schools is launching now. I decided to leave the teaching world to reach more children and teachers, and help pave a way for new school models that will not only impact our most vulnerable student populations, but all the children of this county. The models that are being developed today have the capacity to serve as the frontrunners in a wave of school change that will impact the national dialogue on raising students, no matter how they enter the system, to the highest quality of learning possible. I want Prince George's County to be recognized as a proactive leader in pre-K through 12 education that will have enduring impact on the lives of the children who are part of my family and community, and all the children of Prince George's County who will grow and learn through the programs of our school system. These schools would become places that would provide the necessary health and social services, and extend enrichment opportunities to the entire student body that guarantee that all students and families will have stable and healthy lives that ensure focus on high academic achievement. Thank you for listening to me and for your commitment to all the children of this county.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Educarey.
Good evening, members of the School Board of Prince George's County. My name is Jack Educarey. I'm a native of Flint, Michigan, and I'm a current resident of your neighbor, Washington, DC. However, I'm here because in recent weeks, I've been made painfully aware of the potential dangers of the proposed, and in some cases already under construction, cellphone towers that are being built over the schools in Prince George's County. Growing up, I was raised, and I was told that when your neighbor is having a problem or severe crisis, severe crisis, you don't ignore it, you go help them. Policy, public policymaking, especially in the United States, is strongly based on precedent. The fact that the School Board, whether yourselves or your predecessors, I'm not sure, could approve this type of action that puts the health of all of our future generations in such grave danger, that precedent can be followed around Maryland, around Virginia, DC, and woe the day that this problem arrives on the doorsteps of my home, Flint, Michigan, where I would have to look at my peers, my peers' children and their children potentially not being able to carry their generations forward. I would ask the School Board in front of me three questions. One, how much electromagnetic radio frequency will the, will the students in Prince George's County be exposed to? Second, does the FCC know that you have approved the plans for construction with Milestone? And if so, what has been their response? Finally, why are you attempting to speed up the death of the community that you have pledged to serve, that you've pledged to protect, that you've pledged to educate with this construction? I would strongly ask that you revisit this proposal, think about the consequences, don't think about the short term. All the work that you are doing now would be for naught if you have no children left to fight for. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rita Harper. No Rita Harper? No, no, no? Rita Harper, Rita Harper, okay. How about Maria Narvies?
Good night, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Maria Narvies. My daughter got to school, Coatspring Elementary School. I'm here to give attention to the Board of Education, Prince George's County School, for the community to create school that will benefit my child and the community of the Langley Park area. When I first came to write to this country, it was difficult for me to understand English. I was made fun of because of my accent, and I didn't feel any control by being here. But I did get the challenge to understand, to speak it, to be self-savant. And now I can help my daughter to do her, to do her work at school by understanding everything that's going on. And also, I can understand with her teacher, and I can communicate with the teacher, my daughter's teacher's school, the way that she's doing it, and the way that she's doing the work and everything. This year, my daughter's teacher had sent me a weekly report to tell me how much homework that she has doing, and how she's doing during the school day, and just, and how she's behaving. The report is good way to also know that, how I can help her, and how can support my daughter. My daughter also benefits from after-school programs that help her to get better grades and practice from school, from practice and other programs, and help her more to improve, improve his grades. But I realize that many of my neighbors are not able to help their children the same way that I do, but it's, because it's not, it's not, it's not enough space in the after-school programs for all the students who want to participate in. I know that my neighbors and myself would take classes and programs to participate to help our children to be self-savant, and I know to make more space able for after-school programs will be filled up by my children, my children, and my neighborhoods. We want to help our children to improve their life. I'm excited that Prince George's County Schools are starting to do more things, more good things for our children. I'm sure that opening a new school that will help our children and family to access programs like parenting classes, closer communication with the teachers, and more, and more support in art classes for children that benefits my community greatly. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, thank you for listening and showing your commitment for my children's, for my child and the children of Prince George's County.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cynthia Gay. Cynthia, no Cynthia here, okay, is Batch J. Lo, J. Lo here?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Batch S. J. Lo from the Gambia. I came here today because of Prince George's County Public Schools. I worked for ISOL at the Central High School. I stand here today, may I first of all thank Prince George's County Public Schools. Why? I was a refugee in this country. Because of the policies and the hard work we found in this county, I am proud to announce that I'm a father of two medical students. All this was possible because of the ISOL program. I work with ISOL students at the, at the Central High School. In education, we start from the known to the unknown. There is something that I heard going on in this county, that is, trying to establish two international ISOL schools. This is a very good idea, because when ISOL was first established in this country, I was not here. But today, I'm a proud recipient of that program. And when that international school of ISOL is available in schools, especially in Maryland, it will help most of the students. This is why I'm here today, and thank all those people who negotiated, who are still working to see it implemented. Thank you very much, and may God bless you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public speakers on agenda and non-agenda items. As always, fellow citizens, thank you so much for every single word that you have offered to us today. It is indeed valuable. We will now move on to, we have no legislative or discussion items on the agenda today, so we move on to item 6.0 of the consent agenda, and I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items 6.1 through 6.3 under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Items 6.1 through 6.3 are before the Board for approval of proclamations commemorating the following in Prince George's County Public Schools. World Space Week, Observance of the National Day on Writing, and Jump Starts Read for the Record.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve items 6.1 through 6.3 under the consent agenda?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, however, we are getting Dr. Valentine back in because we need him to conduct this vote. It's eight, eight with the student. Thank you. Nice jacket. Nice jacket. All right, it has been properly moved and seconded to approve items 6.1 through 6.3 under the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. We have no items under the budget consent agenda or non-consent agenda items, so I am moving to Governance Unfinished Business second readers, and I yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of item 9.1 under second readers.
Dr. Eubanks and members of the Board, item 9.01, Capital Improvement Programs for Fiscal Years 2016 through 2021 are before you. We've already done a presentation, we've already had a public hearing, and it is for you tonight, in ample time for us to get it to the state of Maryland.
Thank you, colleagues, at the point now of approving item 9.1 under the second readers. May I please have a motion to approve item 9.1 under Governance Unfinished Business?
As the Chair, I move the approval of 9.1.
Thank you, it has been moved, may I have a second? It has been moved and seconded to approve item 9.1 under second readers. Is there any discussion? Ms. Epps?
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. I just want to reiterate for the record and check in with Dr. Maxwell that there's staff available after the meeting?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Wilson, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Dr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Epps. Ms. Jacobs. Dr. Kaufman. Mr. Valentine.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks.
Aye.
Seven ayes, sir.
Does the student, does the student, the student doesn't vote on this one?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you, we're now on to new business item 10.0, new business, and I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of item 10.1 under new business.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Item 10.1, the Comprehensive, 2015 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan is before you as a first reader, requiring no discussion. Again, we'll bring it back to you for a vote.
All right, item 10.0 under first readers has been introduced, there is no discussion required. Do I see any? If not, I will take a motion to accept. It has been moved, may I have a second? It has been moved and seconded to accept item 10.1 under new business as a first reader. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. And, let's see, no public speakers, where are we? Follow-up items. Follow-up items for the August 28, 2014 budget meeting have been placed in board docs. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to confirm items taken in executive session on Thursday, September 23, 2014?
So moved.
It has been moved, and it has been properly seconded, that the Board of Education hereby approve actions taken in executive session on September 23, 2014, and are as follows: Personnel Appointments, Student Appeals, Legal Matters, and Administrative Matters. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? That motion carries. Colleagues, may I please entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.